Go ahead and proceed with roll call.
Ms. Ringer, can you wait for a moment? Can you make sure that everybody has their phone muted and then the volume turned down on their phone? So it's not on speaker. There's an echo when you speak.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah, there's still the echo though.
What about now?
Yeah, still, still a strong echo.
Okay, I'm going to proceed with roll call. Honorable, Paul Begay Junior.
It's unmuted, go ahead.
Honorable Junior.
Okay, Speaker.
Honorable Junior is on the line. Honorable.
Honorable President.
Honorable Pernell is on the line. Honorable Carl Slater.
Present.
Honorable Carl Slater is on the line. Honorable Charlene So.
Present.
Honorable Charlene So is on the line. Honorable Daniel So. Honorable Edison Wanika.
Here.
Honorable Edison Wanika is on the line. Vice Chair, you have five members entering roll call this morning.
Delegate Daniel So is on the call.
Honorable Daniel So is on the line. Vice Chair, you have six members entering roll call this morning.
Okay, well, Chair, I'll hand it over to you.
Yeah, it's silly. So, and I. Members of the Health Education Human Services Committee. We have roll call. And then, let me call on Honorable Charlene So to provide us the invocation for this morning.
Oh, good morning, Shiyaj, ah, that's an, ah, HESI committee members, adult staff. I don't, that's an, ah, good morning. God, she is so hard on me. Father God, we come to you today. We come before you as your children. We come to you as humbly as we can possibly be. We come to you and we thank you for all the blessings that we have received and the blessings that we are yet to receive. We thank you for the blessings of our loved ones, our mothers, our fathers, our grandparents, our children, our brother and our sisters. We thank you for our lives and keeping us safe every day and waking us up every day and keeping us safe at night. We thank you for keeping us out of harms way. And Father God, we thank you for providing food, sustenance, water on a daily basis. We thank you for everything that we own in our possession, our home, the clothes that we wear. And we thank you for our livestock and the beautiful land that you've created for us. And we thank you for all that you do for us on a daily basis. I know that our prayers have been said continuously. And you do your best to answer according to your will for us. And for each and every one of us, you do have a great plan. Father God, I just ask that you guide us as we succeed your plan and that your will shall become first and foremost before our desires. We ask that you forgive us of all of our sins, forgive us for all that we have done. And I know, Father God, we fall short to your glory and we fall short of your expectations. But we are nothing compared to you, we are not perfect. But we just ask that you make us new today as you cleanse our mind, our soul, our spirit and our bodies. Make us new again today as a newborn baby. And we just ask that you please guide us and help us make good decisions for ourselves and our bodies and our soul and our spirit. And we ask that you guide us every day from here on out. And every time that we lay our heads down to rest, we ask that you keep us safe and that we will wake up rested and our strength renewed and our focus and our knowledge at its best. And Father God, we ask that you give us what we lack. Give us understanding, patience, compassion and a true understanding of what the people need and help us implement those plans for them. Help us find ways and solutions to help them. And Father God, I pray for all of my people on the great Navajo Nation and our family and our relatives that are off the Navajo Nation who have sought employment and other opportunities off the reservation. We ask that you keep them safe and we just help, ask that you help them achieve every endeavor that they pursue. And Father God, keep them safe on whatever they may be strained financially, health and emotionally, mentally. I ask that you go to them here and now. Lend out your healing hand, make them new again and to help provide relief and let them know that there is always going to be a way out. And let them know that you are always there. And Father God, I ask that you keep our children safe, our children in schools, protect them from COVID-19. Let COVID-19 not see the students, the teachers. And Father God, I ask that you cleanse every school, every, everyone in those schools, Father. Remove COVID-19. Let it not touch our bodies, our clothes, our hair, our vehicles, let it not into our home. And Father God, I ask of this purification because I know you can do great things. The Creator of all on heaven and earth, the Creator of every human. And Father God, I ask of this because I know you're the only one who can give it to us. And Father God, I ask that you please be with our grandparents across the reservation. Help them stay warm this winter as we get ready for a cold season again. I ask that you keep their foods and water plentiful and bless them with their livelihoods and whether it be livestock or whether they work for a living by going to work eight to five Monday through Friday jobs. I ask that you provide for them, Father God. And I ask that you be with our staff in Winter Rock as they are there daily. They commute daily and they go home. Father God, keep the roadways safe and clear for them. And keep them rested, God Almighty, and give them strength wherever they may need strength. And please, Father God, we just ask that you be with them in all of our leadership there in Winter Rock. And Father God, I know that we sometimes put our needs and our opinions before others, but remove that, Father God, remove that and help us understand the people first and foremost. And God Almighty, I ask that you please be with our veterans, those who are serving now and those who have served, those that may suffer from PTSD, substance abuse and those that are trying to seek shelter. I ask that you please lend your hand to them as well. Deliver them, deliver them to safety, deliver them to warmth, deliver them to a steady and sufficient meal, Father God. And Father God, I ask that you please be with all of us today in this meeting to understand every aspect, every word spoken. And Father God, I ask that you please be with us throughout the continuing days. I ask of all of this and more, Father God, with your, according to your desire and will. And I pray in your son Jesus Christ's name, amen.
Thank you for wonderful prayer. Certainly should keep us grounded and humble throughout the day. At this point, uh, committee members, you have any announcements? Do we have any announcements?
This is John, right? Chair, Delegate Paul Begay.
Oh, Satey, you, good morning, good to hear your voice. Uh, you have the teleconference floor.
Thank you, Satey, uh, Chair, Honorable Delegate Daniel So. Man from the east, I see, yeah. I don't vice chair, another, I don't share where, uh, Delegate Charlene So. Say, Pernell, I don't, my brother Edison. Delegate Edison Wanika. Yeah, so I don't listen to, sorry, the staff members. Uh, Leonard is not here today, but, uh, we have a very competent person in pulling up the fort here. So I'm here with, uh, Honorable Delegate Edison Wanika, the VNF room. Uh, just one, uh, thing, uh, and the way, uh, uh, I should go. Uh, it's not actually, no, you don't, uh, page Unified School District. A I C ego. What the comment, oh, uh, uh, we're in a very unsettling, uh, stages with that, uh, page Unified School District. So, actually, no, it, uh, Saahulun was shit and, uh, la. Oh, do ban the, so the, uh, but I'll try to, oh, how you, uh, need, uh, the, uh, the, uh, they chose to not work there. Oh, how you, one after another. I think, uh, what, what I was told or what I, I heard also was two or three teachers per month. But they go, the, uh, the, uh, the teachers are running thin. Oh, uh, the page Unified School District has over eighty percent Navajo students. And I shouldn't say, but it was, it was, it was, uh, uh, call, it, uh, uh, call.
That was the reason to, um, put it on the agenda. And perhaps it'll give us a, once we talk about that executive order, then, uh, we could address how we, um, interface with the public school districts. Um, I guess some prelim- preliminary, uh, aspects is, how did, then we, um, meet with the Page Unified School District, because they're the governing body. And I can't remember if Page Unified School District is, uh, has single member district voting? But if there are large numbers of registered voters in that, within the school district boundaries, then how do then we affect change to where it becomes a majority, uh, controls Navajo School District? As I, so those are some things that my thoughts have, um, basically, uh, gone to. You look to the horizon. You look to see where you want to go, where you want better conditions for your children. And, and this is one of those items. So as we move along in the agenda, we'll also, and for me, I can, um, put aside, um, Friday's schedule to, uh, travel to Page. Um, and it, and it does require immediately. With Ayla committee members. Any other announcements? We, we, we do have a special Nobby session tomorrow. And then, as I, I recall, there's a petition for a special session. with fifteen signatures, so there is the, the opportunity to have the council session tomorrow afternoon. And as you saw in the emails, I've, um, just in working with Speaker, he asked if I could be Speaker pro temp for tomorrow, for the whole day. So, uh, I'll be in Windrock in the morning. and we do have to address this matter with Page Unified School District. As we recall, eighty percent of twenty-five hundred is two thousand students. That's the number of students we're talking about, and maybe more. So it is important. Hot Ayla committee members, um, anybody else? If not, then we'll go to recognizing guests and visiting officials. All the, all, all the folks on the line, please introduce yourself.
Good morning. This is Tamara Johnson with the Office of the President, Vice President.
Good morning. This is Tommy Sosie with the Office of the Speaker.
Good morning. This is Michelle Boris with Department of Health.
Morning, Marcus Yasi, Navajo Area, IHS Office of Indian Self-Determination.
Good morning, Health Education and Human Services Committee Chairman So and the other members. Uh, this is Manuel Rico with Legislative Services. I'll be on the line. Um, and also, uh, I should add to, um, Honorable Charlene So for that invocation. Thank you.
Yeah, it's Aye Bennett. This is Greg Bigman with Dine College. Uh, thank you Chair and members of the committee.
Yeah, it's Aye. This is Yvonne Keen-Billison with the Indian Health Service, Navajo Area. Good morning.
Good morning. Honorable Delegate Chair So in HES Committee. This is Emily Arviso, Acting Associate Deputy Director, BIU Navajo.
Trying to get in the team, so. Oh, yeah, it's Aye. Uh, it's a good old sitting there. It's a, it's a, uh, uh, but if she, eh, not school, just totally crazy. Yeah, um, it's actually drinking, of course, crazy, eh, yeah. Uh, we'll go to item number three, review and adopt the agenda. Uh, Ms. Angelita Benali.
Yes, Mr. Chair and members of the Health Education and Human Services Committee. You have your proposed agenda for the Health Education and Human Services Committee, Twenty-Fourth Navajo Nation Council Regular Meeting, October twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one, presiding the Honorable Daniel East, so as chairperson, Honorable Carl R. Slater, Vice Chair. Uh, the place is the Via Telecommunications, Windrock, Navajo Nation, Arizona. One, call me total, will call, indication announcements. Two, recognize guests and visiting officials. Three, review and adopt the agenda. Four, review and adopt journals. Five, receive reports. A is an Navajo Nation Vaccination Strategy for five-to-eleven-year-old individuals. Presenters are Ms. Rose and So, Navajo Area IHS Director, Dr. Jill Jimm, Director of the Navajo Department of Health, and Patricia Gani, Acting Superintendent of Schools with DOTI. B, regarding higher education developments. Uh, presenter is Patricia Gani, Acting Superintendent of Schools with DOTI, and Ms. Rose Graham, Director of the Navajo Office of Navajo Nation Scholarship and Financial Systems. C is a discussion, a briefing regarding the Executive Order on the White House Initiative on Advanced Education Equity, Excellence, and Economic Opportunity for Native Americans, and strengthening tribal colleges and universities. The presenters are Emily Arviso, uh, Acting District Superintendent, Bureau of Indian Education, Navajo Area Office, Patricia Gani, Acting Superintendent of Schools with DOTI with Navajo Nation, LaShawna So, Assistant Secretary, New Mexico Indian Education Division, Public Education Department. Uh, Gwen Pereira Warner, Deputy Secretary of Teaching, Learning, and Assessments with the New Mexico Public Education Department. D, report is the Alcohol Treatment Center with, um, regarding the Old Rehoboth Hospital. Presenter is Council Delegate Edmund Yasi. Six, old business none, seven new business. A is legislation number zero, nine, eight, dash, twenty-one. And B is a Schedule A meeting, um, that's requested from Dr. Kurt Dinehouse, with the, who is the New Mexico Secretary of Education, with the New Mexico Public Education Department, and also the, uh, a meeting with the New Mexico Indian Education Division, who will participate. Eight, close of meeting announcements and adjournment. Mr. Chair?
Oh, yeah, eh, I was on mute. I'm sorry. Um, I'll recognize the motion by Honorable Purnell Halona. I didn't recognize the voice on whose second. Honorable Edison Wanika seconds the motion. Okay, um, committee members. Um, there was an email from, um, Dr. Jill Jimm to defer the vaccination report until next week. At the next regular meeting, November tenth. And then.
Chairman So?
Yes.
Uh, this is Marcus Yasi, uh, from the IHS. I, I just wanted to, um, possibly request until, um, the following week, November tenth. Um, just looking at the timeline, um, for the pediatric vaccination ages five to eleven. As you may know, the, um, FDA Vaccine and Related Biological Products Advisory Committee did review, uh, the data yesterday on October twenty-sixth. And there is another Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices meeting that will take place November, uh, second and the third. So it might be prudent to have, um, additional conversations based off of those, uh, meetings next week. Um, and my recommendation is perhaps we can push this out until November tenth. Um, because it might be too early to have some broad discussions in terms of implementation plans, um, on November third. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Yasi. Um, and this is one of the items that the committee, especially Vice Chair, um, Carl Slater had requested this, uh, update in looking to the horizon and seeing where to go with our, our young population and how to, uh, affect their, wellness. So, uh, with that, uh, committee members. Then there is also another email, um, Ms. Rose Graham, the Director of Navajo Nation Higher, the Scholarship Office, to request, uh, that we delay, um, that particular, um, um, report. But again, it, uh, I'll, uh, lay that before the committee. And, um, especially the fact that, uh, the next item, the, uh, White House, uh, Executive Order, it involves the Scholarship Office also. And in addition to that, the list of presenters, we will have, uh, Dr. Elmer Guy, Dr. Charles Monte Russell, uh, and Board Chair, um, Greg Bigman on the call. Um, and, and they would also, uh, speak part to the Executive Order because it most specifically, um, names, uh, TCU's.
They're not taking you to tribal charter, or they would have.
Tribal colleges and universities. And then the other is I've also had, uh, my LBA extend invitation to, uh, FIPPI and IAIA. I understand over at, uh, Institute of American Indian Arts, there are, the enrollment is basically fifty percent Navajo. So those are some items that I had left off the agenda, committee members. Chair is open to amend the agenda?
Uh, I guess I'd, I'll motion or request to modify if the parties are amenable to that, to remove the IHS report. And then, I think, Chair, you're probably more familiar with this than I am, but I saw that, was it crisis standards of care had been adopted or implemented or something in New Mexico? And I was hoping if we heard from IHS today that they could update us on what our bed usage rates are and how we're doing staffing and those sorts of concerns. You know, this weighed pretty heavily on what sort of restrictions that we seek as a nation, to protect our, our collective health. So, uh, I'll, I'll remove five A. And then is there another amendment you'd like, Chair?
Uh, just the one that, uh, Rose Graham, uh, requested by email that they defer to, uh, the next meeting, the update, uh, regarding UNM and Navajo Nation Scholarship.
Okay. So five A and five B?
Right. Honorable Halona, Honorable, uh, Unika. Are you okay to have those two items removed?
This is Monica.
That's right. I, I agree with that.
Okay, she love. All right. Thank you, committee members. With that, um, they asked to amend the agenda, has been approved by the moving parties. Now let's go to, um, a roll call vote. Ayla, he cut it, eh, was it Ms. Heather Springer? On the roll call.
Yes, Chair, I can do roll call vote. Honorable Paul DeGee, Junior, how do you vote?
Yeah, the Paul DeGee votes green.
Honorable Paul DeGee, Junior votes green. Honorable Purnell Halona, how do you vote?
Halona votes green.
Honorable Purnell Halona votes green. Honorable Carl Slater, how do you vote?
Green.
Honorable Carl Slater votes green. Honorable Charlene So, how do you vote?
I vote green.
Honorable Charlene So votes green. And Honorable Edison Wanika, how do you vote?
Green.
Honorable Edison Wanika votes green. Chair, you have five members in favor, zero opposed, and Chair not voting.
Thank you, Ms. Springer. Committee members, we have, uh, amended the agenda. Um, item four, um, the review and adopting of the journals. So, can I say something? Oh, Cecilia. Honorable Eugene So.
Uh, not the hot sauce, Bobby, yeah. Uh, this one is, um, each, uh, not a deal, eh, it's a whole area. Uh, it's got on to your, your, your conference. Please let me show us, I don't know, because I have another conference, so you can get another one. Which one did you tick off? I don't want to go to this one. It's, it's that one's off.
Uh, it's. Ms. Benali? You help provide an answer to Honorable Eugene So.
Yes, Mr. Chair and members of the Health Education and Human Services Committee. Uh, Delegate Eugene So, the, um, Health Education and Human Services Committee did amend the agenda for today's meeting, along with approving it. And they deleted the report, uh, five A, which is the Navajo Nation Vaccination Strategy for five-to-eleven-year-old individuals. And they also, uh, deleted five B regarding the UNM Higher Education Development. Uh, both, um, reports will be put on the next HES agenda, which is going to be on November tenth. Mr. Chair?
The hot Ayla Cecilia. She says, huh? Under being, so you have to, to stay on the line. I'll be on, oh, yeah. Okay, she, uh, Ms. Angelita Benali, item number four, the, uh, review and adopting of the journals. Are there any ready for the committee?
No, there are none, um, listed. Um, it'll be on, um, November tenth, um, agenda as well, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Benali. That'll give us, uh, that'll take us to item five, a new A, uh, Ms. Benali.
Mr. Chair and members of the, um, excuse me?
Go ahead.
Okay, um, members of the Health Education and Human Services Committee. Uh, the new five A is a discussion, the briefing on the, um, Executive Order on the White House Initiative on Advancing Educational Equity, Excellence, and Economic Opportunity for Native Americans, Strengthening, uh, Tribal Colleges and Universities. And the, um, the presenters are Emily Arviso with the Bureau of Indian Education, Patricia Gani with the Dine, uh, uh, Department of Dine Education, and LaShawna So with Assistant Secretary with New Mexico Indian Education Division, and Gwen Warnaman, Department of, uh, Secretary of Teaching and Learning and Assessments, also with the New Mexico Public Education Department.
Hello?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah.
Can you hear me? Yes, this is. Ron?
Is that Ron Lassard?
Yes, it is. Hello.
Yes.
Is that Spike?
Yes, hi, Ron. I'm just Spike Bighorn with the Bureau of Indian Education. Um, Emily, um, had, um, asked our office, the Office of Sovereignty and Indian Education, to prepare to, to be on board. And actually, Ron Lassard is with the Department of Education. And we're going to defer to him on behalf of BIU to answer any questions, to provide a briefing on the, um, on this executive order because he is, he is, uh, he, he was intimately involved with it and, and more than we know about it. So, um, BIU will defer to Mr. Lassard. Ron, thank you so much for joining us.
Uh, my pleasure. Thank you, Aye. Okay. Again, uh, again, uh, let's do proper, uh, let me call this item to the table, the new five A. Ms. Emily Arviso was to present. We have two new individuals. Um, we've never met. And so the two individuals that interrupted the proceedings, please, uh, identify yourselves. Remember, all actions, with the committee rules, all action goes, conversation goes through the Chair, just like in any other legislative proceeding.
Uh, Mr. Chair, this is Angelita Benali. Uh, for your information, I, I believe Ms. Emily Arviso is still on the line. Thank you.
Going one. Going twice. Uh, Ms. Benali, do you see her on the Zoom call?
Um, yes, I do, sir. She's, um, muted, though.
Our six. Where is that unmute button on your computer screen? The lower left or the lower right?
Yes, it's usually in the block. I did ask her to unmute.
Okay, it's, uh, time's a ticking. Uh, the, the young man that first spoke up. Again, identify yourself. I didn't catch your name.
Yes, uh, yes, sir. This is Spike Bighorn. I work at the Bureau of Indian Education here in Oklahoma City. And in my office is, um, is the tribal edu-, tribal, uh, tribal college universities, um, Department for BIU. And late last night, I received a email from my boss, Tony Dearman, the Director of the BIU, and he asked us to be on this call this afternoon to talk about the, um, initiative, White House College University's, uh, White House Initiative, the, um, Executive Order. And so my staff, who are not on the call, uh, graciously, um, contacted Ron Lassard with the Department of Education, who, um, is well-versed in this, um, Executive Order and who could provide a briefing on behalf of the federal government. And so I'm, I, I would defer to Mr. Lassard. So whenever you're ready to call on BIU, uh, when you would normally call Emily, that would be Doctor, uh, Mr. Lassard on this call on behalf of us.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bighorn. And, and, uh, yes, in, in, give us your contact information through Ms. Angelita Benali. And, and then, Mr. Greg Lassard. You have the floor.
Thank you, sir. Um, thank you, everyone. Uh, my name is Ron Lassard. I'm Mohawk. Uh, I serve as the Acting Executive Director. What was formerly the White House Initiative on American Indian and Alaska Native Education. That was in, um, in the Department of Education. Um, and I also serve as the Tribal Consultation Official for the Department of Education. The, um, so the Executive Order you're speaking to is the new Executive Order, which was signed by President Biden on October eleventh, that replaces the previous Executive Order one-three-five-nine-two, which was the White House Initiative on American Indian and Alaska Native Education. The new Executive Order being the Executive Order one-four-zero-four-nine, the Executive Order on the White House Initiative on Advancing Educational Equity, Excellence, and Economic Opportunity for Native Americans in strengthening tribal colleges and universities. The original Executive Order was created, actually during the Clinton Administration. It was the White House Initiative on Tribal Colleges and Universities. And then through the Obama Administration, uh, it was changed to the White House Initiative on, uh, American Indian, Alaska Native Education and Tribal Colleges. And now it's been replaced, uh, uh, by the Biden Administration. It, it includes, uh, quite a bit of, uh, language on the, uh, Tribal Colleges and Universities and how those Tribal Colleges and Universities will be strengthened, uh, through, uh, programs. those Tribal Colleges and Universities will be strengthened through programs and policies of the federal government, especially the Department of Education. And it also is reaching out to providing more equity and educational equity and excellence to our native students. And one thing that we, is very important, which was included in the executive order, is the preservation and revitalization of native languages. And I want to thank Spike for having me on. I, I work with Tony Dearman. We have the National Native American Language Summit coming up, and we've worked together on that for a number of years. So one of the things in that, in the executive order, is the recognition of the boarding school here. And just to let you know, my mom was in the Phoenix Boarding School and also in Crown Point. So I hope I can answer questions if you like, or send further information if you would like, so.
I was hoping you'd go through the, the executive order, step by step.
Hey. It's very long, but I'm happy to go through that if you'd like.
Well, let's go, let's go. In your view.
Yes.
The first part, it seems to be an introduction.
Yes.
And then it goes on to the other steps. Could you go through the introduction and what it entails? And then from there, I'll ask the committee if they would like to comment or ask questions.
Yes.
Thank you.
I will. And I, I wanted to clarify, I can explain.
Incidentally, the old Crown Point Boarding School no longer stands.
I know, yeah.
And then, and then the second Crown Point Boarding School also no longer stands.
Ah, oh, thank you for that information. Oh. So I'll give a real brief, before I go into that, there's the process that happens. So I just want everyone to understand that the Department of, I work in the Department of Education. This, this was created by folks from the Department of Education and the White House Domestic Policy Council and others weighed in on this. So I, I, I'm not the author of this. I just want everyone to know that. I was able to provide some content to it, but, but I'm so, I just wanted to clarify, clarify that. So I will go through this, starting with the policy, the very first page. If you would like me to start there, I will. Uh, so this is signed by President Biden on October eleventh, mostly because it's Indigenous Peoples' Day, as people call it. It says, "The United States has a unique political and legal relationship with federally recognized tribal nations as set forth in the Constitution of the United States, Statues, Treaties, Executive Orders, and Court Decisions. The federal government is committed to protecting the rights and ensuring the well-being of tribal nations while respecting tribal sovereignty, inherent rights of self-determination. In recognition of that commitment and to fulfill the solemn obligations it entails, executive departments and agencies must help advance the educational equity, excellence, and economic opportunity for Native American students, whether they attend public schools in urban, suburban, or rural communities, are homeschooled, attend primary and secondary schools operated or funded by the Bureau of Indian Education of the Department of Interior, or attend post-secondary educational institutions, including tribal colleges and universities." So I'll, I can continue on with the introduction if you'd like. More than a century, the United States. Yes.
You need another, you need another one?
Honorable. Hello, hello, is that you? Asking for another one? Please mute your phone.
I'm sorry, Chairman So, this is Delia Otto So. About to press mute. I'm on the line. I'm sorry, Chairman.
Okay. Uh, go ahead and continue, Mr. Lash, Lashard.
Thank you. Yes, Lassard. Thank you, sir. For more than a century, the United States imposed educational policies designed to assimilate native peoples into prominent United States culture that devastated Native American students and their families. Beginning with the Indian Civilization Act of eighteen nineteen, the United States enacted laws and implemented policies establishing and supporting Indian boarding schools across the nation. From eighteen seventy-one onward, federally-run Indian boarding schools were used to culturally assimilate Native American children who were forcibly removed from their families and communities and relocated to distant residential facilities where their native identities, language, traditions, and beliefs were forcibly suppressed. The conditions in these schools were usually harsh and sometimes abusive and deadly. Although these policies have ended, their effects and resulting trauma reverberate in Native American communities even today, creating specific challenges that merit federal attention and response. During the global COVID nineteen pandemic, tribal nations raced to protect tribal members and, and their, of their life. Tribal elders are often the keepers of tribal culture and are critical for the preservation of native languages, as the vitality of native culture is inseparably tied to native languages. Accordingly, my administration is committed to supporting preservation and revitalization of native languages. This includes honoring the vibrancy, importance, and strength of native languages and traditions, values, and cultural practices that accompany them. In addition, the COVID nineteen pandemic has amplified longstanding educational inequities that disproportionately affect Native American communities and burden Native American students. In particular, Native American children face significant learning disruption as the digital divide and lack of educational resources put remote learning out of reach for too many. Native American students experienced the greatest decline in undergraduate enrollment in higher education from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one compared to other student groups. This inequity, these inequities compounded with the effects of other disparities faced by Native American women and girls in particular. Spike and gender-based violence during the COVID nineteen pandemic has intensified safely, safety concerns for Native American women and girls who are already victimized at higher rates than any other women in the United States. The federal government must put strong focus on early childhood and K through twelve educational opportunities. These are important to developing and strengthening Native American communities as they set the stage for educational advancement and career development, including opportunities to attend T C U's, tribal colleges and universities. T C U's also merit focus tension as these institutions are integral and essential to tribal communities. Their foundation, tradition, and mission are unique, and their cultural grounding is invaluable to providing high-quality education and successful outcomes for Native American students. T C U's fulfill a vital role in maintaining and preserving irreplaceable native languages and cultural traditions, in promoting excellence in Native American education from early childhood through primary and secondary education into post-secondary education and throughout graduate's career, in offering an entry point for the career in academia, academia, strong technical and trade school opportunities, job training, and other career-building programs to Native Americans. And supporting tribal economic development efforts by building and strengthening a highly-skilled Native American workforce. Often they are the only, often they are the only post-secondary institutions within some of our nation's most economically disadvantaged and rural areas. As a result, T C U's provide crucial employment opportunities in services and communities that continue to have higher rates of unemployment, resulting in social and economic distress. The federal government therefore reaffirms and strengthens our commitment to Native American communities by investing in tribal colleges and universities to support their continued growth and success. I can continue. My administration has advanced equity, excellence, and justice in our nation's educational system and to further tribal self-governance, including by supporting activities that expand educational opportunities, improve, improve educational outcomes for all Native American students. My administration will help expand opportunities for Native American students to learn their native languages, histories, and cultural practices, promote indigenous learning through the use of traditional ecological knowledge, and enhance access to complete and competitive educations that prepare Native American students for college careers and productive and satisfying lives. This includes supporting educational opportunities for students attending T C U's, given the unique advantages of those institutions provide. My administration is further committed to ensuring all Native American students have the ability to pursue careers that provide economic security for themselves and their families, including Native American women, who currently on average earn just sixty cents to every dollar earned by white men. To these ends, my administration will collaborate with tribal nations to collect better data on educational attainment gaps faced by Native American students to help deepen understanding of these gaps, including barriers to workforce participation and informed solutions. Now, that was section one. Should I continue, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Lashard. Committee members. Um, do you have any questions or comments? I, I guess, uh, committee doesn't have any comment or question. I'm, ah. I guess the, the one aspect I'm seeing missing is, uh, the huge ties. Tribal nations, indigenous groups. Huge ties to the land.
Yes.
Um, the aspects of, uh, Mother Earth, the air, the water, and the sacredness of the land.
Yes.
And, and so that's the aspect I'm seeing missing, as it is, um, both colleagues, Eugene So and Otto So would attest to that. And so, and, and I'm sure the rest of the committee. And, and so that, that would be one thing.
Yes.
That would be my comment. And then we will go, go ahead and go on to section two.
Okay. And I'm looking to see if there are any additional references to the land. Uh, I will go to section two. White House Initiative on Advancing Educational Equity Excellence and Economic Opportunity for Native Americans and Strengthening Tribal Colleges and Universities. To advance equity in our nation's schools, to promote the economic opportunity that follows it, and to fulfill our commitment to furthering tribal sovereignty there is established in the Department of Education. The White House Initiative on Advancing Educational Equity Excellence and Economic Opportunity for Native Americans and Strengthening Tribal Colleges and Universities, of which the Secretary of Education, the Secretary of the Interior, and the Secretary of Labor shall serve as co-chairs. The Secretary of Education shall, in consultation with other co-chairs of the initiative, designate an executive director for the initiative, uh, executive director. The executive director shall co-chair the Education Committee of the White House Council on Native Americans, established by Executive Order one three six four seven, June twenty-sixth, two thousand thirteen. The initiative shall consult, excuse me, sir. The initiative shall consult and collaborate with tribal nations, Alaska Native entities, T C U's, and state tribal and local education department agencies to advance educational equity, excellence, and economic opportunity for Native Americans by focusing on the following policy goals. Increasing the understanding of systemic causes of educational challenges faced by Native American students and working across agencies to address those challenges. Supporting and improving data collection related to Native American students and the implementation of evidence-based strategies to increase the participation and success of Native American students in all levels of education and prepare them for careers and civic engagement. Increasing the percentage of Native American children and families who participate in high-quality early childhood programs and services that promote healthy development and learning, prepare Native American children for success in school, and affirm the cultural and linguistic identity of Native American children. Ensuring that all Native American students have access to excellent teachers, school leaders, and other professionals, including supporting efforts to improve the recruitment, preparation, development, and retention of qualified, diverse teachers, school leaders, and other professionals who understand Native American students. Live experiences and can effectively meet their students' academic, social, and emotional needs, particularly in partnership with T C U's. Breaking down barriers that impede access to higher education institutions that serve Native Americans, such as T C U's, with federal funding and strengthening the capacity of these institutions to participate in federal programs and partnerships. Ensuring that the unique indigenous cultural, educational, traditional, ecological knowledge and native languages needs of Native American students are met. Exploring policies to expand and support career and technical education, job training, and other career-building programs. Native American students and workers, furthering tribal sovereignty by supporting efforts to build the capacity of tribal educational agencies and T C U's to provide high-quality education services to Native American students. In working to fulfill its mission and objectives, the initiative shall, consistent with the applicable, applicable laws, engage in regular, meaningful, and robust consultation with tribal nations regarding Native American education and related issues in accordance with the Presidential Memorandum, January twenty-sixth, Tribal Consultation and Strengthening Nation-to-Nation Relationship, Executive Order one three one seven five. Identify and promote evidence-based best practices that can provide Native American students with a vigorous and well-rounded education in a safe and healthy environment, as well as access to support services that will improve their educational, professional, economic, and civic opportunities. Advance and coordinate efforts to ensure equitable opportunities for Native American students in the wake of the COVID nineteen pandemic, including recovering learning losses and addressing other challenges, academic, financial, social, emotional, mental health, or career development brought on or exacerbated by the COVID nineteen pandemic. Encourage and develop federal partnerships with public, private, philanthropic, and nonprofit entities to improve access to educational equity, excellence, and economic opportunity for Native Americans. Monitor and support the development, implementation, and coordination of federal government educational workforce, research, and business development policies, programs, and technical assistance designed to improve outcomes for Native Americans. Create opportunities for strategic partnerships with agencies and work closely with the Executive Office of the President on key administrative policies related to Native Americans. Serve as a liaison with other agencies on Native American issues. Advise those agencies on how they might help to promote Native American educational opportunities and track their success. their success in doing so. Advise the co-chairs of the initiative on issues of importance and policies relating to educational equity, excellence, and opportunity for Native American students. To facilitate partnerships along, among agencies to advance educational equity, excellence, and economic development opportunities for Native American students. The director shall work with the Director of the BIE and the Commissioner of the Administration for Native Americans of the Department of Health and Human Services, and the Director of the Indian Health Service, Department of Health and Human Services, to develop the separate memorandum of agreement, of, of, of agreement between the initiative and each of those entities that will take advantage of each agency's expertise, resources, and facilities. Each memorandum of agreement shall be completed within one hundred and eighty days of the date of this order and shall address how the BIE, ANA, and IHS respectively will collaborate with the initiative in carrying out the policies set forth in, in section one of this order as appropriate and consistent with the applicable law. Each agency with representation of the White House Council on Native American Affairs Education Committee shall prepare a plan, agency plan, outlining measurable actions the agency will take to advance educational equity, excellence, and economic opportunity for Native American communities, including the agency's plans to implement the policies and goals of directives outlined in section B of this section, and other relevant work in consultation with the executive director. These agency plans shall be submitted to the co-chairs of the initiative on the date the co-chairs shall establish. Each agency with representation on the White House Council on Native American Affairs Education Committee shall, uh, assess and report to the co-chairs of the initiative on a regular basis as established by the co-chairs. The initiative shall monitor and reevaluate each agency's progress toward the goals established in the plans, and shall coordinate with the agency to ensure that its agency plan includes measurable and action-oriented goals. The direction of, uh, Department of Education shall provide funding and administrative support for the White House Initiative to the extent permitted by law and subject to the availability of appropriations. To further shared policies and policies, priorities and policies that advance educational equity, excellence, and economic opportunity for underserved communities, the initiative shall collaborate with other White House initiatives related to educational excellence and economic opportunities. The initiative shall collaborate as appropriate and consistent with applicable law with other organizations and entities, including, uh, urban Indian organizations, governing bodies of tribal nations on federal and state reservations, state-recognized tribes, Native Hawaiian and Native American Pacific Islander organizations. Uh, however, I, I'm just inserting this myself. We know that when, when we, when we do tribal consultation, that's governed by Executive Order 13175, which is only with the federally recognized tribes, but the initiative, uh, certainly wants to hear from, uh, the urban Indian organizations and other organizations that are, have Native children, you know, in schools. Uh, no later than one year after the date of this order, and annually therefore, the co-chairs, the initiative shall report to the President on the initiative's progress in carrying out its mission and objectives under this order. And I want to mention this because this is happening this week, uh, I mean, next week, I'm sorry. Uh, the National Advisory Council on Indian Education, uh, called NACI, as many of you know, is comprised of members appointed by the President, uh, under the Elementary and Secondary Act, ESSA, and shall serve as the advisory council for the initiative and shall report to the initiative, uh, through and as requested by the executive director to the extent appropriate and consistent with the applicable law. NACI shall include members from across the education spectrum, including members who can provide specific expertise on issues concerning TCU's and other Native American-serving institutions, K through twelve, early childhood education, special education, and vocational education. In addition, and consider duties set forth by this order. Uh, they will advise the co-chairs, NACI, the Nation, uh, National Advisory Council on Indian Education, they do a report, just I'm inserting this myself, they do a report once a year, and they'll be meeting next week for their first meeting, uh, in, since, in this administration. So they, they advise the co-chairs on what is needed for the development and implementation and coordination of educational programs and initiatives to improve educational opportunities and outcomes for American Indians, Alaska natives, how to promote career pathways for in, in-demand jobs for Native American students, including registered apprenticeships, as well as internships, fellowships, mentorships, and work-based learning initiatives, ways to strengthen TCU's and increase their participation in agency programs, how to increase public awareness of general solutions for the educational and training challenges and equity disparities that Native American students face, that causes of these challenges and disparities. Approach to establish local and national partnerships, the public, private, philanthropic, and non-profit stakeholders to advance the policy set forth in addition, in section one of this order. Uh, actions for promoting and improving, expanding educational opportunities for native languages, traditions, and practices to be sustained through culturally responsive education. The NACI and the executive directors shall appropriate and consistent with applicable laws. Uh, collaborations between the initiative and tribal nations, Alaska Native entities, and other tribal organizations. The executive director, in consultation with NACI, addressed, uh, the NACI initiative submitted to the President, report. The Department of Education shall provide administrative provisions for NACI in carrying out this order. Secretary of Interior and the Secretary of Labor and Secretary of Education shall study, collect information, and publish reports on the education of Native American students. Uh, this order supersedes the executive order I mentioned in the beginning, which is Executive Order 13592, which got, was signed by President Obama in two thousand and eleven. And that was called Improving American Indian and Alaska Native Educational Opportunities as, and strengthening, uh, tribal colleges and universities. So it says to the extent that there are other executive orders that may conflict, oh, this is just saying that this is, this provision supersedes the other executive order. The heads of agencies shall assist and provide information to this initiative, consistent with applicable law, as may be necessary to carry out the functions of this initiative. Each agency shall bear its own experience, expenses of participating in the initiative. And then there's a long list of definitions, which are similar to what are, are included in like our tribal consultation definitions and things like that. This order, uh, let's see, the, the final thing, it says, um, general provisions, nothing in this order shall be construed to impair or otherwise, uh, the authority granted by law, functions of the director, the order shall be implemented consistent with applicable law. This order is not intended to and does not create any right or benefit substantive or procedural, if possible, or law, long, let's see, departments, agencies, and entities, employees, or agents, or any person, signed by President Joseph R. Biden on October eleventh. There. And I'll make sure that you provide a copy of this so that, uh, you have it, if you don't already, we'll get it for you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Lashard. Actually, I found it on the world wide web. Oh, and, and committee members. We have Navajo Nation Washington office. And I can't recall if they even sent this out, executive orders, to the twenty-fourth Navajo Nation Council. So in that aspect, the other reason, committee members, that I, I asked for this particular, um, presentation, Mr. Lashard basically is with the U.S. Department of Education?
Yes.
And they basically have some responsibility on how public schools function?
Yes.
Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And that's the reason, uh, should say, Honorable Paul Begay, Honorable, um, Arlene So, the aspects that you highlighted concerning, uh, what the students and the parents of Paige Unified School District are facing.
Yes.
Uh, this may be the avenue to address what, um, our kids are facing.
Yes.
And so that's, uh, that's what, uh, and that, and again, the other is, uh, we, we haven't ever, um, talked with, like, the, uh, Coconino County Superintendent?
Uh-huh.
Or, uh, those folks. Um, Arizona has a system that is much different than New Mexico, and I'm, don't have contact, and perhaps staff can make the necessary contacts with the superintendent, um, as well as the Arizona Department of Education. But, uh, uh, committee members, again, my, uh, uh, we bring this to you, uh, do you have any questions? Uh, committee members? Mr. Lashard?
Yes.
Regarding, uh, uh, regarding the tribal consultation?
Yes.
In, in that aspect, uh, the Navajo Nation established a three-branch government? And?
Yes.
And it continues to evolve, and right now, the, uh, council is the governing body of the Navajo Nation. And as such, the committee of the whole named Navagia Kit Committee basically establishes tribal position.
Yes.
And in that aspect, legislative body has to be also con- consulted. In, in the view from the White House, um, they may say, we only talk to the President of the Navajo Nation, and that has occurred before, but please be knowledgeable of how our government, um, functions. And, uh, we, we do have legislative council expanding on a letter or a legislation that will define what tribal consultation means to the Navajo Nation.
Yes.
Please be aware of it. Um, committee members, auto, uh, colleagues on the line, do you have any comments, questions as we move forward in our discussion?
Sure.
Uh, Cecilia, Honorable Carl Slater, Vice Chair?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to raise something, I guess, more for the committee, but it's related to, it's mentioned in the executive order, but on the federal boarding schools initiative, um, I think the committee should meet with our traditional practitioners and have our own consultation, and then we need to get back with the federal government and provide some, um, guidance from, from ourselves. It was mentioned at the Dinah Hatale Association Meeting on Saturday, and, um, I just want to raise that now, but I, I don't really have any comments or questions on the executive order at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Cecilia, Honorable Vice Chair Slater. Anybody else? Um, if you would, Mr. Lashard and?
Yes.
Miss Big Horn, if you would, uh, stay on the line to listen to, um, the other folks that make up our education system, as well as, um, uh, from Dinek College, as well as Navajo Technical University, and we may get the President of CIPI, the Acting President, as well as President Martin from, uh, Institute of American Indian Art on the call. So, Mr. Nali?
Um.
Sir.
Who else is? Hello?
Yes, hello.
Oh, I'm here. I can hear you.
Okay, um, Honorable Halona, let me go to you before we go to Ms. Benali.
Uh, thank you, Chair, and, um, thank you, uh, committee members and, uh, everybody on the line, good mornings. Uh, yeah, it's, uh, morning, uh, uh, our presenter is, uh, Mr. Uh, um, Shard, I think it was, and, uh, I would thank, thank you for bringing your, uh, presentation to us today, as well as, uh, joining us today. I appreciate your, uh, presence here, uh, uh, addressing the committee. Uh, some of the things that I don't really understand about this, uh, renewing and renewing, and I guess this has been going on for several decades now, has there been any, uh, uh, measurement of success in all these programs that you guys have been putting together as far as the, uh, trying to empower the colleges, improve the colleges? Do you guys have some sort of measures of success that you have put together so that we can see if these policies are working and, and if we need to change them in some way to make them better for, uh, especially the colleges here on the Navajo Nation? Uh, those are just, uh, some of the comments and, uh, things that I, uh, uh, was thinking about that are on my mind right now. Uh, and, uh, I, I would like to, uh, I, I guess I would like to find that on, online, but I was interested in trying to get, uh, a written portion of the, uh, presentation that you get, you had, because usually I'd like to go back and, uh, bounce back and forth to, uh, when I'm reading the information, to verify some information that I know where I'm, 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 I'm talking about, put it that way. So, uh, thank you very much again, uh, uh, for the information, I appreciate it, and, uh, Chair, back to you. Thank you.
Uh, Honorable Halona, Ms. Angelita Benali, when she put the Zoom meeting announcement, look on your calendar and look on Hess Zoom meeting, press on that, announces the call-in number, and below that is the agenda, and below that one is the executive order that Mr. Lashard reviewed with the committee. The other is, if you look on the emails, I think it was. The other is, if you look on the emails, I think it was early Sunday morning, they sent it to the twenty-fourth Navajo Nation Council. It's on the twenty-fourth, is the, it's who it's sent to from myself, and it does have the executive order. Honorable Halona, Mr. Lashard.
Yes.
Respective of, uh, the questions that Honorable Halona, um, placed before you.
Uh, so, yes, yes, the answer, uh, especially for the new executive order, now that these executive orders go from administration to administration. This one is one of the longest-standing, uh, something to do with education within the Department of Education for American Indian and Alaska Native Education. It, um, so, so there, the, going back there, um, through all the different administrations. So during the Obama administration, there are several programs, um, Title III, there are lots of different funding streams that fund tribal colleges and universities. The Office of Indian Education at the Department of Education has, um, approximately thirteen hundred, um, Title VI grants. Um, so there, there are several grant funding opportunities throughout, um, throughout the department. There's a Department of Education, uh, that have been, uh, successful for, for tribal communities, uh, Native American language grants, there are, so, so there are several of those within the department. The one thing that this executive order does, I think, is that, which I think by frankly was probably missing in previous ones, is the accountability. So now, there have to be reports, uh, submitted, um, to the co-chairs, you know, to, to the Secretary of Interior, Secretary of Labor, so the others that, so, we, there has to be the Department of Education along with the other agencies, uh, and through the White House Counsel on Native Affairs, will have to show some progress that's been made based on what the executive order states it needs to do. And, you know, sometimes, um, you know, orders are written, um, in a way, uh, very lofty. This, this is written in a way, this has to be a living document. This has to continue to, um, so that, so really all federal agencies look to this and, and do more to support education in tribal communities and more, or to recognize the sovereignty by the communities and the education departments within, within those nations.
Thank you, Mr. Lashard. I, I guess, uh, in, in context, let me rephrase, uh, Honorable Halona's question. Has the previous executive orders, have they brought positive results to Indian country?
Uh, yes, yes, they have. I would say certainly, um, Executive Order One Three Five Nine Two, which was the one that this, who superseded this one during, uh, President Obama's administration, that actually it stayed in place during the previous administration. So it was, it was still in place. Uh, so many initiatives came out of the executive order, um, which included, um, the school environment listening sessions, which we did, uh, several years ago, uh, around the issues of, um, mascots and, and other, other things that are related to school environment. It also has helped us work closer with Bureau of Indian Education, uh, so working with BIE. We've also formulated the, um, also formulated the, uh, Native American Language Summit, so the MOA with Native American Languages, uh, with BIE and with administration through Native Americans. That's been, uh, an effort from, that came out of the most recent executive order, and now we'll be able to expand that to do more around native languages, the preservation and revitalization of native languages. And I think that, um, I, so I, I, I see that, uh, you know, many of, um, many of us, you know, that, many of us that are natives, like myself, that are working in government, um, which, uh, we want to make sure that these things go forward and that we continue those efforts around, uh, you know, especially, like I said, like languages, and we, and we did do that with the executive order, and we did add other things within the executive order, working more with parents and teachers and, and, and working more with, um, uh, native youth groups. Um, I did a lot of speaking at, um, native youth groups and getting young people involved, whether it be Uniti and other places, um, getting them involved in, um, education and bringing native speakers to them to, and peer, you know, and role models within, you know, native teachers and educators so that young people could see them and speak with them. So there, a lot has come out of these executive orders, and, um, and we, we've been able to do, um, you know, but I think, I think this one will, you know, and I think it's up to, it's up to not just the other federal agencies, but it's, you know, it's like, you know, holding, holding the Department of Education accountable, you know, to these things that are stated in that. And I think that that's important, and I think that, um, you know, that any, anytime you feel that there's a need for consultation, you know, I would hope you would reach out to me and we can, you know, do a consultation with the Department of Ed and from other folks that, you know, that, that are involved in Indian education.
Thank you, Mr. Lashard. Um, Ms. Benali, who do we have listed next to enter into this discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the Health, Education, and Human Services Committee, you have the presenters, um, and participating in the discussion are Emily R. Viso with BIE Navajo Area Office, Patricia Gani, Acting Superintendent of Schools with the Na, um, Department, Department of Denek Education, and LaShawna So, Assistant Secretary. Although for Ms. LaShawna So, I did receive an email indicating that she is out of the office, but it didn't indicate a return date. And also, Gwen Para, Korea, um, Warnament, Deputy Secretary of Teaching and Learning Assessment, New Mexico Public Education Department. And, uh, Dr. Warnament did accept the, the Zoom invitation yesterday. Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Gani and, and Ms., uh, Warnament, Otto, uh, Dr. Elmer Guy, Dr. Charles Monte Russell, and Greg, uh, Bigman, you are free to enter into the discussion and, uh, I guess basically a highlight where you think it's a, a real positive aspect. I guess the main thing is, uh, for myself, um, with this committee, we want to make sure this particular executive order gets some muscle, some tenuous, some sinews, some tendence and sinews to this, uh, White House Executive Order. Meaning breaking down barriers, uh, contracting grant schools, BIE education, um, the aspect of, uh, even state public education from the three states. One of the things that we use a lot of our scholarship funds and the students use a lot of their Pell Grant is to take remedial courses. From the ground, ground level, the appearance is they're in college. Then in an aspect, it's, uh, maybe their first two semesters are, uh, spent on remedial courses, and how do we get, um, our young people's, you know, level of education to go to, um, to be higher? And then, of course, the aspect of the COVID pandemic, um, and, and the result from that is there has been learning loss. And so those are some things that are really, uh, this, this particular executive order, you know, seems to be headed in, in the right direction and for us at Navajo Nation and wherever our Navajo students are, how do we, uh, again, um, this executive order gives us some latitude and, and that latitude, how do we make it responsive? How do we use our authorities to make it work? Whether we be an administrator, a board member, and in this case, a, a council delegate? How do we make this work? With that, the committee members, uh, Ms. Patricia Gani and all the other folks that I named, uh, you're welcome to respond to this, uh, executive order, and let's see how we can move it forward. Thank you.
Mr.
Oh, Satilla, uh, um, let, let's let the administrators go first out of the Kedole. Ashwade.
Mr. Chairman, this is, has a guy like to comment, if I may?
Oh, how could he not, uh, uh, Dr. Elmer Guy, if not us, go ahead.
Thank you, um, Mr. Chairman, all members of the committee, and it's good to, uh, listen to you, um, Ron, Ron Lassard.
Yes, oh, good to hear you, Elmer.
Yeah. Uh, thank you for that report that you provided on the executive order. Um, members of the committee, um, from the AHEC, the tribal colleges, we are in full support of this executive order. Uh, we've been working with Ron, um, and others to, um, have President Biden's administration renew the executive order. As, uh, Mr. Lassard mentioned, it started with Bill Clinton when he was president and continued to, um, President Bush, and at that time, if I'm, I'm, I think it was only for tribal colleges. And then under Obama administration, they combined the TCU and K-12, and nothing happened with Trump administration. And, um, and now, uh, President Biden signed it on October eleventh, which is wonderful. Um, there's, um, I think one of the key things in, in this executive order is that it highlights recovering learning losses, which the other executive order does not really state because of the pandemic. So I think because of, of, of this new executive order, it gives us an opportunity to work with the, with the three, the secretaries to address that recovering learning losses. And it also includes emotional and mental health. And so those are critical areas that we should concentrate on as well, in addition to the academic and other areas. And what we like is that it strengthens tribal colleges and universities. And, you know, under, um, Section Two, it talks about, um, the Secretary of Education working with co-chairs from Interior and, um, the other, the Health, and, um, and that's where they have a memorandum of agreement that was signed, I think, in two thousand eighteen, and that MOU basically addresses, um, languages. And, and so they're all working, you know, Mr. Lassard mentioned that they're addressing some native language issues, they have a conference on it, and I think it's an opportunity to revisit that MOA as well. To, and that MOA, we could include other things, and in particular, I think the recovering losses, I think, should be addressed. I think, um, construction needs of schools also should be, uh, included. Uh, Honorable So, you mentioned, there's nothing about land that was mentioned. The executive order doesn't really say anything about, uh, construction, school construction. I think that's a, a critical piece in our delivery to, um, to education as well as broadband and other, other needs. I think it gives us an opportunity to address those.
Yeah.
The, the other thing I wanted to mention is that, um, uh, under NACI, I think the way I, I read this, and we've been asking, um, working with Ron and others, that we want a representative from TCU to serve on NACI, and I think this executive order does that.
Yes, it does.
So we're really grateful for that. Um, the other is, I think it gives an opportunity to the Navajo Nation, to the Health, Education, Human Services, Services Committee to nominate someone that you feel would be a, a, a good representative on NACI. I think the, the Trump administration, they never reappoint NACI members. And so that gives a real good opportunity, I think. And I'm really glad to see in the executive order, early childhood education, and, um, that there's a emphasis on that and, and as well as the need for teacher education. Our schools, not only on Navajo, but, um, schools across the country and other native communities, we desperately need native teachers in, uh, in elementary education, in math, in science, and all others. In addition to teacher education, we also need librarians and nurses and et cetera. So I, I, for me, I'm really happy with this, um, executive order, and, uh, what I also like about it is what, uh, Mr. Lassard said about accountability. So a year from now, October eleventh, two thousand twenty-two, a report has to be made to President Biden. And so there's not that much time, time will, will go by really quickly. And hopefully, uh, by two thousand twenty-two, uh, we make a, a good report. So those are just my comments as I look through the executive order, and I'm glad you're, the committee is, um, has taken time to, to go over this very important executive order, shun tai. And there was a question raised, a good question raised by, um, Delegate Halona about how has the executive orders been helpful in the past? And I can only speak to tribal colleges and, and, you know, this executive order allows us to work across agencies, uh, to work with, uh, Department of Defense or National Science Foundation, you know, all of these federal agencies. And in the past, we're able to get a set aside under the National Science Foundation for tribal colleges, so we applied to grants. We also had a set aside with Department of Energy, Department of Education, so it really gives us that leverage to, uh, work with the agency so they can prioritize. So it really gives us that leverage to, uh, work with the agency so they can prioritize some of their funding through grants and we're able to do that. And, and I think with this new executive order, we're, we will, we will continue to do those and provide grant opportunities for tribal colleges. Uh, thank you, um, Mr. Chairman, all members of the committee for giving me some time this morning.
Yeah, Dr. Elmer Guy. Uh, Dr. Monty Russell, are you on the call?
Yes, I am, Mr. Chair.
Oh, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Chair, and members of the committee, uh, guests and, um, other presenters. And also good to hear your voice, Ron.
Oh, good to hear you, Monty.
Yeah, I think, you know, one of the things, I think, uh, Dr. Guy really said it, it allows us to work across agencies. But it also means that it allows us to actually keep from working in silos. So how can one program be working across agencies where you actually are actually having a, a larger, um, impact? I think what the, the phrase or the sentence that I really look to within this executive order is the phrase or the sentence that says strengthens our commitment to Native American communities by investing to support. That word investing, I think, is something that, you know, you need to find, you know, words and language within legislation and executive orders that you can really say, this is, you know, what is it meant by this order? And I think that phrase is really important because when we talk about all these different things, it really comes down to money and being able to look at it in a way, uh, to move forward. So this allows TCU's, this is allows, uh, K-12 to say, here's our challenges, whether it's at Head Start, K-12, or higher education. And the other thing that I think is important is that executive orders can be ignored, as we saw, you know, the previous administration. But they also allow for, but it doesn't happen very often, for the ideas to come from the tribes as opposed from the administration. So this allows the Navajo Nation, the Hess Committee, uh, schools to say, here's our plan to address these areas that are identified within the executive order. And now, based on your executive order, we're asking for funding, very specific funding. So I think, you know, by having, uh, the Secretary of Interior and Secretary of Labor being the chairs and the co-chairs, the other thing that's doing is is also looking at, and I think the other thing that's really important, it's about economic development. And so I think the other part of this is how do you then create programs that also drive not just educational outcomes, but improve, uh, the capacity for economic development, which means workforce development and things like that. So it, it allows for more than I think what people just literally say, TCU's. It allows actually for a mechanism to actually look at a larger issue and then be able to move forward. I think a very specific, um, uh, was thing that I would say that the, the, the committee, uh, should look at is reestablishing the data, the data sharing agreement, uh, between the BI E and the Navajo Nation. This clearly shows the intent is to share information. So why not get access to all of that information? Why not get access to not just with K-12, um, uh, information, but other data sharing that can help drive, uh, decision-making and, and have that input? So I think, you know, a data sharing agreement that is reestablished for today, the one that was established, you know, uh, roughly, I don't know, what it was about eight years ago, things have changed. But I think that's something that's really important to be able to say, here's a very specific, um, uh, goal of this. The other statement that I think is really clear and it's to me, to me, a, a executive order saying, this is what we want to accomplish. And then you could have the agency say how it's going to be done. But just as important is the tribe to say, this is how we want it done. The other statement that's really important, important in here is a commitment to build a capacity of tribal education departments. So what I look at when I see these is you have a baseline of what's in place right now. So you have BI E, they have TED funds. Okay, that's a baseline. But how do we build capacity? You invest more. So to say and for them to point at anybody to point and say, well, we're already doing that, no. To me, that's a baseline. And now, based on the language of the executive order about investing to support, this opens it up to be much more specific as you move forward and going, going forward. I think one of the things too is that it allows for, uh, very specific opportunities in terms of breaking down, um, barriers to federal funding. You know, again, by being able to look at this in a comprehensive way, I think it, it, it really i- is helpful. The other thing I think that's important within this is we hear a lot about equity today. You know, but I think what's really important is the definition of equity for Navajo is different from the definition of equity for Hopi. So we have to define what equity means for our, you know, early childhood education, our K-12 education, our higher ed education, and then provide an opportunity to go forward. So I, I think what it, what it really does is, you know, I, I use the phrase a lot that it provides, it gives us a chair at the table, so we have a seat at the table. And in the past, without an executive order, a seat at the table was really just a folding chair. Well, this is now a solid chair at the table. Now what we do with it, that's our responsibility, right? That's our thing, what are the ideas that we come up with? And so I think, you know, in going forward, I, I just look at it that it does provide, as Dr. Guy mentioned, a real opportunity, um, to, 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 to move Navajo education forward. Uh, but it only does that if we come up with ideas, that we come up with ideas, not that we respond to ideas. And so I think as we move forward, I think that'll be the challenge. The other thing is being able to move quickly. You know, I think that's the thing that an executive order does allow the administration to move quicker. Because here, they already know this is a, a goal of the president. This is a goal of the executive and administration. And so it's not so much having to always go back and get, um, uh, support. The support is written, it's stated, we can see it. So now how do we then utilize this, um, as we move forward in a constructive way? Uh, I think it is what, uh, we're looking at. I think all the things that were said about language programs, it's, a lot of it comes down to then, okay, coming up with programs, how do we use this? What's the oversight? What's the capacity building? All these different things that are kind of the, the day-to-day things that we think about are, are things that we can actually move forward because it does talk about supporting and improving data collection related to Native American students. But I think what's important about an executive order is for the Navajo Nation to view it from their frame of reference, not the administration viewing it from their frame of reference. Because data collection for the Navajo Nation is very different from data con- collection for the federal government.
Yes.
And so thank you for the opportunity.
Monty, if I may say, you, you said something, this is wrong. Um, and I thank you for that. I want to mention that within this executive order, there are several entities that, um, where you can, you know, hold accountability. So now there's a White House Counsel on Native American Affairs. It's no longer the MSI report that it used to be. It's a report that has to be, uh, with all the federal agencies are addressing this at the White House Counsel on Native American Affairs level. And, and same thing with the, the additional co-chairs. I mean, I think that there's opportunity to, uh, hold, you know, the department and other entities in this accountable by saying, where's the report that was due? You know, I, you know, I think there are opportunities there that weren't there before.
I agree. Thank you, Chair.
Ms., uh, Gwen Warnomet, are you on the call? Ms. Patricia Gani. Response, input on this, uh, executive order? Committee members, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
We can hear you, Chair.
Okay.
Yes, Chair, we can hear you.
Okay, good. Uh, uh, Ms. Angelita Benali, is, uh, Ms. Glenn Pareya Warnomet on the call? As well as Ms. Patricia Gani?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I do not see, um, Ms. Gani on the listed on the call, nor, um, Dr. Warnomet, unless they're, um, calling in with a number that just appears by number and not by their name.
Okay, um, Mr. Lassard?
Yes, sir.
Um, in, uh, the, uh, Navajo Nation, uh, Department of the Education, had been working on, uh, the acronym, DSAF. It was an application to the US Department of Education. And that particular, um, has been, I guess, uh, floating around. And there's been attempts to, uh, basically get it approved. But can you basic, uh, what can you, uh, provide as, uh, a response to my question?
Yes, can, if, um, I can certainly get it to the right people. Um, I, can you, can someone send that to me, you know, what it is, so I know, so I can speak clearly and try and get this to the secretary's office and find out what the status is and why it's floating around? That would be good if I could get some, some background on that, so. And if someone could email, I'll give you my email. And then I can, I can get back to that person. I'll, I'll do my best to find out what is happening with that. That was, would you please say the, an acronym again, it was DSAF, Department of?
No, it's, uh, but, uh, Vice Chair Slater.
The Dine School Accountability Plan, the Dine School Accountability Plan.
Uh, yes, okay. The Dine School Accountability Plan.
Yeah. Thank you, Honorable Vice Chair.
I will find that out and, um, I will look into that for sure. And should I send information? Uh, where, where would we best to send, uh, the information after this call?
Well, you could send it to, uh, Legislative Advisor, um, Ms. Angelita Benali. And of course, you could also send it to the Chair of the Committee.
Okay, I will do that.
Okay, uh, Ms., uh, Patricia Gani, one more time. Dr. Warnomet. And let's see, Ms. Rose Graham, would you happen to be on the call? Okay. Committee members, any other items? Now we can go to Brother Eugene So, Satoba Hansi. Honorable Otto So, are you still on the call? Okay. Committee members, I think that takes us to the end of our presentation. Um, let me give the floor to, um, um, Dine College, uh, Board of Regents President, um, Mr. Greg Bigman. You have the teleconference floor. I had recognized, uh, you to be part of the, under, uh, commenters on this executive order. You have the floor, Mr. Bigman. Sitchey, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair, and so, uh, members of, and also members of the Hess Committee and, uh, honorable guests. Um, I think with this White House initiative, it's very big and there's tons of things that could, um, how this could apply to Navajo, but what probably needs to be the focus here, and this is, I guess, the nature of my input, is considering where Navajo wants to take this and what impact Navajo wants to see. And I also sit on the, uh, um, AGB's, um, Board Chair Advisory Council for AGB. And this is one of the topics that they talk about is equity, inclusion, and justice, social justice for, um, universities, public institutions, uh, private institutions out there, basically higher education. And I think how this applies and what I see working on Navajo is that one of the things that we really need on Navajo is we need a lot of programmatic development with our institutions. And we need to be able to collaborate with external partners to really build up the workforce as, as it talks about within the, uh, plan, the initiative. But secondly, what, uh, I don't really hear a conversation about is how do we start to fix some of the issues that are resulted from, resulting from the Indian extermination period? And these are symptoms that we see within the organization. These are, you know, uh, things such as historic trauma, you know, abuse, you know, the social ills, you know, within our nation that plagues our nation. And a lot of these items are not addressed because it's a complex, um, topic. And it's a touchy topic to also talk about. But it's something that is reflective when I look at the leadership in terms of how we start to, um, navigate issues. And what I mean by that is that, um, now that, um, Navajo no longer specifically has everybody fully practicing Navajo, we have members that say they're Christian, but they still exhibit some of the, uh, customary values of Navajo. So a lot of times when, uh, I consult and I do work for, um, various parts of Navajo, I still see these, a lot of internal conflicts within our nation. And these are due to, um, violations within our customary value. You know, we have laws that are written, um, I guess, in the context of, uh, uh, in a Bilogana style. And it's not reflective of our culture. And so that's why we see a lot of audit findings, we see things that are different. And it's coming up with systems in terms of what's appropriate, not only for how we operate our organizations, but is reflective of who we are as people. And I think that's what's, um, the help of. And I think that's what's, um, will help reduce a lot of not only organizational conflict within the organizational culture, but really help to move Navajo forward in terms of how do we start to build our nation. And that's one of the, one items that I wanted to talk about in terms of the, um, social equity, um, integrating in culture, and it's a process that's going to be a long-term investment into really building our communities, but it would be something that will help it from every level in terms of economic development, you know, encouraging, um, leadership and growth within our communities, and doing it in a way it's built upon our, our core systems of how we operate as indigenous tribes. So that's what I wanted to share, Chair, um, thank you for the time.
Thank you, uh, President Bigman. And, and it does, it does, uh, and, um, if it's, uh, basically how, uh, we've, we've responded, um, Ayazi, uh, Martinez versus the State of New Mexico, that decision talks about education, equity, and career development. So that would be another, uh, document that we could, uh, share with, uh, um, Mr. Leshard, as well as the tribal remedy framework that this committee took to, uh, the Navegía Kit Committee, and is, uh, before the New Mexico, uh, Legislature, as well as before the New Mexico Public Education Department. Those are some aspects that would certainly, um, drive how we move forward, and I appreciate the fact that, uh, as Bigman, you, you mentioned the historical trauma. In, in dealing, uh, with that, it's like, it's been stuck away in the hasty, uh, uh, a bit, the, the trauma, out of, because of the discussions and, and, um, the issues that have come, been stuck away, and then issues, uh, that kind of, it brings back, oh, yes, this happened, oh, yes, this happened to my relatives, this happened to my parents, and then it, it puts it right in front of you again, and it, it does, um, park in the heart to again deal with it, and how do we best deal with it? And, and in that aspect, the, the mental and behavioral health, and it goes to the spiritual health. And that's the part that, uh, we, we, um, it has to be addressed. And I think that that's where Honorable Slater, and when he was on that call with the Dine Association, uh, that's where they're talking about the, the spiritual healing of the folks, the people. So, um, thank you, committee members. Do you have follow-up? Does anybody else want to make comment? Eugene Soh, Otto Soh, are you still on the call? Okay. Committee members, the Chair is open to a motion and a second to accept the, uh, report, as well as to accept the, uh, comments from our, uh, participants, uh...
Motion.
Uh, motion by, uh, motion by Honorable Carl Slater, second by Honorable Purnell Halona. Questions, discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chair, this is Angelita Benali. I would, um, um, I would request if, uh, Mr. Leshard and, uh, Mr. Bighorn could give me their, uh, email address, and then I can send them an, an email that won't walk them out of our Navajo Nation Outlook system, email system.
Yes. Would you like that now? Uh, this is Ron Leshard, my email is ron, R-O-N, dot Leshard, L-E-S-S-A-R-D, uh, um, at E D dot G O B, gov, ron, I'm sorry, it's ron dot Leshard at E D dot gov.
Okay, thank you, all lowercase?
Yes, ma'am, all lowercase.
Thank you.
And, uh, this is, Bighorn, it's all lowercase, it's S-P-I-K-E dot B-I-G-H-O-R-N at B-I-E dot E D.
And that was B-I-E dot E D, is that correct?
B-I-E dot E D U.
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you.
Committee members, any, any other, um... And thank you for, um, giving your emails, so now all the folks on the call now have your emails. Um, Mr. Bighorn.
Yes.
We do have an issue with code day school, new construction. And there has been, uh, both Navajo Nation EPA and the US EPA doing assessments. And, uh, that was one of the issues that we wanted Ms. Arviso to address, and so in that aspect, uh, again, I'm sure you can have access to it since it's within the BIE system already, but we do need to really look at how to resolve that issue, and the impacts that, uh, exposures may have had on, um, the children that attended that school. As I recall, that the current day school facility was built in ninety-two, and it existed, and they're on a, um, an effort to have, uh, replacement facilities built. And that's, uh, very concerning. It seems like it's, uh, we understand, former Regional Director, Ms. Pinto, had received the letter back in twenty sixteen, and now, um, again, this is one of the issues that the committee is, um, looking at, and the, uh, aspect of, um, accountability. How do we resolve it? We build in the same place, saying, oh, there's minimum, minimal radiation exposure? Or do we look at a new site? So, um, Mr. Bighorn, I'm placing it in front of you.
And I will, um, cer- certainly, uh, take your concerns to, uh, to Ms. Arviso, I know that earlier on the call, she sent me a text and said that she was unable to get on, I'm not sure if she's able to get on now, I know she's having issues there. Is, is Ms. Arviso, is that you? So possibly she's still having some, some, some issues, so I will definitely reach out to her and take those concerns to her and ask her to follow up on behalf of BIE.
I'm placing that before you. The, the main thing is, uh, um, the Office of Construction Management, I think is basically the lead agency regarding that.
So I, I, actually, I don't have any, um, responsibility for K through twelve schools, um, I'm, I'm to do, um, tribal colleges, universities, and the Johnston Valley Program, language immersion, so, um, I would not be able to directly address those, those concerns, which I, I understand are grave concerns that you have, but since it's in the area of the Navajo Nation, I certainly could have Ms. Arviso follow up, I'll also move that information to Ms. Arviso's, uh, Superior in Albuquerque, but, um, when it comes to construction and actual, um, day-to-day operation of, of BIE schools and travel operated schools, um, I'm in a different division, I, I don't work in like that K through twelve division, which I'm, you know, um, I, I hope that makes sense, I'm, I was asked to be on this call because of the tribal, uh, college and universities sys-, uh, executive order, which does fall in my area, but when it comes to K through twelve, I, I don't have any responsibility other than, um, the, um, Johnston Valley Program, which goes to basically to, uh, public schools.
Mr. Bighorn, you certainly built a big silo.
(laughing) Yes, sometimes there are silos, you're right.
And this executive order says there won't be silos. Okay, committee members, any further comment, discussion? Uh, Mr. Leshard, uh, will, uh, I think the committee's gonna go to Page Unified School District, uh, we'll, we'll meet with parents and, um, other community members out there, and...
Yes.
Um, at some point in time, we'll have to face that head-on.
Yes. Well, I, I want to thank you, Chairman, for, for allowing me to speak with you today.
Yes, sir. And thank you, thank you, Mr. Bighorn, thank you, Mr. Leshard, and, and all the folks that commented on this White House, uh, executive order. We will, um, be carrying it around in our binders to make sure we keep attention to that task. And, and, um, committee members, and, um, Ms. Gani and other folks, how then do we develop a path to utilize this, uh, executive order? Um, as we go forward, um, you know that, uh, part of the, uh, legislative concern that the council adopted was to, uh, really, um, work on the BIE administrative functions. Then, of course, the other aspect along with that is the DSAP. And now it seems like we have another interface to those efforts with this White House, um, executive order. At some point in time, um, hmm, within the first two weeks of November, I'd feel like to reconvene on those aspects. We know that we had, uh, consulting contracts with certain individuals, they brought forth a document, and I guess those are some of the things that we will work with to basically be part of the plan in this, uh, as pushing forward on the executive order. Those are some of my, some of my preliminary thoughts, committee members, and at some point in time, we, we basically have to, um, put that on our, our work schedule. Thank you, committee members. Otto, Ms. Heather Springer, could we have a roll call vote? On, um, this, uh, report?
Yes, I can. Honorable Paul DeGuey Jr., how do you vote? Honorable Purnell Halona, how do you vote?
I'll vote green.
Honorable Purnell Halona votes green. Honorable Carl Slater, how do you vote?
Green.
Honorable Carl Slater votes green. Honorable Carl Lee Soh? How do you vote? Honorable Edison Manica, how do you vote? Honorable Edison Manica votes green, and Honorable Paul DeGuey votes green as well. There you have four members in favor, here are opposed, and Chair not voting.
Thank you, Ms. Springer, appreciate that. Um, it's Benali, the next item on the agenda.
Yes, Mr. Chair and members of the Health, Education, and Human Services Committee, you have, um, B report, and it's regarding the Alcohol Treatment Center at the old, uh, Rehabuch Hospital. The presenter is, uh, Council Delegate Edmund Yasi, who requested to be on the agenda, Mr. Chair.
Okay, uh, let's see, Honorable Edmund Yasi, are you on the call? Sitchay, where are you? Does anybody see his, him on the call?
Mr. Chair, this is Angelita Benali, I don't see his name on the call, however, I do see some, um, a few numbers that don't indicate, um, the, the person who's calling.
Okay, let's see. Is there a number ending in nine five zero four? Ms. Benali?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I don't see that, the last, um, digits of that number, however, there is a caller, uh, user one and a caller user two, it doesn't indicate a name or, nor a number. And a caller user six. And a caller user six.
Anybo- okay. Do we have Edmund Yasi on the call? Honorable Edmund Yasi. One, one. Twice. Three times. Okay. Next item on the agenda. Ms. Benali.
Uh, Mr. Chair and members of the Health, Education and Human Services Committee. You have the next item is, uh, number six, old business, which is none. Thereafter, it's number seven, new business, and A, legislation number zero, one, nine, eight dash twenty-one.
Okay. Committee members, uh, this is the legislation that we dealt with before. That, uh, Ms. Angelita Benali can re- reread the legislation.
Yes, Mr. Chair, this, um, legislation, uh, the, uh, Health, Education, Human Services Committee does have the final authority. And in the previous meeting on September, um, twenty-second, it was on the Health, Education, Human Services Agenda. And at that time, it was agreed, uh, by the sponsors and by the committee members to hold a work session on, regarding the, uh, legislation. And on September twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one, a work session was held by the Health, Education, Human Services Committee. And it, uh, included the input from Dine College and the Navajo Technical University. And here you have the, um, legislative, um, tracking number, uh, for legislation, uh, zero, one, nine, eight dash twenty-one. The proposed standing committee res- resolution, twenty-fourth Navajo Nation Council, third year, twenty-twenty-one, introduced by council delegate Eugene So and co-sponsored by council delegate Otto So. Tracking number is number zero, one, nine, eight dash twenty-one in action relating to Health, Education, Human Services Committee, establishing the Education and Recovery Task Force. The substance of the, uh, legislation has been electronically read and previously, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair.
Yes, uh, thank you, uh, Ms. Benali. Do we have the sponsor and co-sponsor on the call? Eugene So?
So, so.
Oh, hi, Father Haineswood. Uh, she's eight inches. Oh.
There's your process for listening, I'll say. And yeah, I had to be, yeah, listen to the power. Okay, yeah, that was something that I missed about me, man. I believe, uh, two colleges were on the, on the home, I don't know, maybe the Hollywood. I took, uh, I think I have one copy.
Um, it's silly. The, the, um, the White House, uh, executive order, Iggy. That, uh, I see. The, the inki, Iggy. Uh, uh, so right now, you already know that the committee, um, they, they, they need, uh, but I see the committee really doesn't, uh, agree with task force. Cause they really don't have any power and authority. Who? This, that, those, the legislation, be that's the Hoiki. Hey, hey, uh, eh, this executive order from the White House, Iggy. But, uh, uh, what else up, be that's the of, um, you weren't on the call, uh, when we accepted the report. Were the two gentlemen from Washington DC, um, talk about the executive order. Otto, um, Dr. Elmer Guy, Dr. Monte Russell. Um, eh, Quaggy, yeah, had a, see. Who? It just, uh, who do eh, yeah, has seen so eh, I don't, but that's it, see. Um, a cool, Halit, oh eh, yeah. Um, could you withdraw your legislation? And that way we go forward with, uh, getting, um, all these folks uh, together to chart a path forward to, um, with the, address the mental, behavioral and social, um, aspects of the children in addressing the trauma and the learning loss. How do we then help the folks, uh, to how do we help, um, chart a path forward using federal money and as it will address, uh, um, address, uh, those very specific things that your legislation talks about. And we can go forward without the task force with, but, uh, using the same responsibilities and authority that's vested in Department of Dine Education as well as within the power and authority of the, uh, Health, Education, Human Services Committee. Eh, what, eh, it's silly.
Oh, what, uh, what, eh, yeah, so, uh, it's also, uh, that he called it, uh, Biden, the executive order. Maybe he, he, he tried this, he, we, October, eleven, the, she may, yeah, and uh, then, uh, and my leader, they share on me, but they in biggest people. And that's, this is, he, he, like, he, he. Um, now, top he, the old car, she, yeah, they, cause it's, oh, that's it. Oh, I mean, eh, what, uh, by just, you know, about, huh, me, he, he, eh, what, eh? For he, he, that's, 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 yeah, I, eh, eh, the, yeah, it's, he, he, so, I mean, for car. Oh, eh, eh, that, yeah. Eh, eh, oh, next, uh, get Biden. And then, say, so, I mean, eh, what, eh, next, eh, so, I mean, then, yeah. But, uh, in other tracks, that's how, eh, eh. Oh, eh, eh. Eh, eh, yeah, I see, what's, that's, I, I, eh. They're in, uh, but, you should, uh, I saw, eh, eh, you, 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 M.O.E., huh, then, you, you, how they, yeah, yeah, eh, eh, eh. Even now, that, you should, ah, sah, eh, eh, you should, you should, M O, eh, eh, me, be hard, eh, yeah, yeah, eh, eh, eh.